Welcome, everyone. It is 5:15 on Monday, June 22nd, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Please note, everyone in attendance, I'm sure Clay will be here in a little bit. The first item is the consent agenda, which is approval of the minutes of the June 8th meeting, approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have the renewal of a Class C beer permit with Sunday sales, Dries Oil Company Incorporated, the renewal of a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales for Brothers on Main. We have our renewal of a Class C liquor license with catering privilege and Sunday sales from Barata's Steakhouse. And we have adding an outdoor service privilege for Carroll Brewing Company. And then there were a list of cigarette permits. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Go move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
And then I believe this evening, under oral requests and communications, we have a Miracle Field update. Is anybody on for that?
I think we have a couple individuals. I'll let them turn their cameras on and they should show up to the council. Ally and John.
John, Jerry.
Oh, there you go. Okay, John. I understand you have a request about the Miracle. Give us a Miracle Field update, please.
Yeah, so, you know, thank you for getting this on the agenda tonight. You know, really, what we were trying to accomplish is just to let the council know that we have raised enough funds to begin doing some of the earth moving and pouring the underlayment concrete. And we've raised enough to also put in the servicing. So our hope was to get the dirt work done and the underlayment or the concrete work done in July, maybe beginning part of August. It does need to cure for about 30 days before they put the servicing on. But our hope was to have all that buttoned up and put to bed maybe by September 1st. So it's exciting news for us to have that amount of fundraising done. We are over goal and have enough fundraising to easily cover that and continue down the course of the project. But I wanted to make the council aware of that. There is one little tweak that we potentially would like to see with the movement of the field. Just based on some feedback we've gotten from neighbors, it's not a significant move, just kind of a little readjustment, a few feet. You know, one glass or the other to get the field in and make it fit a little bit better. But we're excited to give that update and wanted to field any questions that the council potentially has of us as far as the project goes.
Who's going to do your construction stuff, John?
We have some volunteer help on the underlayment piece, which is really helping us to be a little bit more effective with costs. Miracle Field requires us to use Service America for the servicing, which is the most important piece. That's what makes the field kind of special for individuals with special needs. So we're hiring them. I'm not confident where they come out of. I believe it's Georgia. They have crews all over the country, but they are specific to Miracle Field. So the crew that they will send to Carroll to put our field in only does Miracle Field.
Do you have them set up so that once your concrete's cured, they can go ahead and put that surface on? Or how does that work?
Yes. So we have to engage in a contract with them, obviously. I've been waiting to sign that. I talked to our wholesaler, Tom is his name. He is out of Georgia and he told me that they could be here in a week if we could have them. He goes, he notified me that they are, we're on their schedule. We just need to give them a drop dead date when they can start. And it's contingent on weather, obviously. We have to get the underlayment poured. It has to cure for a fair amount of time before they can put the servicing on.
Right, okay. Thanks. Are there any other questions for John or anything?
I just have one. John?
Yeah.
Jerry Fleschner. You said the neighbors preferred moving the field?
Well, we got a little bit of feedback. I might have Ally's speak to that because a lot of that went to her and Pat. But the design of the field, and I don't know if you guys have seen it, it's in the hallway of the rec. You know, it's not a substantial move. It's just repositioning the field a little bit to avoid doing extra dirt work also. So there was some feedback from the neighbors in regards to the positioning. And then as far as the dirt work goes, if we keep it kind of where the existing field is, it will require a little less on our end to get the field where we need it to be. Is that accurate, Pat and Ally?
Yeah. A lot of the feedback was when we were actually building the park. And I had probably, I would say, eight or 10 of the neighbors that had come up and were asking different questions and asked about the layout. I had the map or the layout the tribe had done for us. And their request was to move it up where the existing backstop was. They wanted this more visible from their houses. They liked the idea of having it up where they could see the park, where they could see the kids playing, and really wanted it up where it was more visible to them. So that was a lot of the feedback that I got from, I would say there was at least eight, you know, of the neighbors that were there. I don't know them all by name, but there were any one of a number of them that talked to me while we were working on it.
So by moving that-
The biggest advantage for us. Go ahead.
Well, so by moving that footprint, you're still okay as far as inside of where the current field is?
Yes, yep. I went up there and measured it off. We don't have to take any trees down, which I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing where it was originally. We were having to take trees down where it was planned with Shrive. I had kind of taken the plan up there and done some measuring to where if we bring the existing sidewalk that runs up along the west side of the park, we could continue that sidewalk very easily up and around and connect it to the ball field and to the walking path that Shrive had, you know, planned in there for the future. I guess, I think I talked to Jack and Mike about it. You know, positioning the sidewalk where we did, you know, allows us to come in with the parking lot and readily attach the parking lot to that existing sidewalk. And then I guess the biggest piece of the puzzle, which I think would probably be something that maybe Shrive could look at at that point, is seeing whether we need to reposition the concession stand, the bathrooms, you know, and how that positions in there. I have talked to a number of people. And I think as soon as we can get the ball field laid in there and then figure out how that lays in there, we also have a lot of interest in a couple of the local lumber companies wanting to donate some materials. And obviously, I've talked to a plumber that wants to help us with the handicapped accessible bathrooms. Also have a number of people that are ready to get started on that project also. But I know that's going to take a little more planning to tie it into the park and the ball field and the parking lot.
Thank you, Pat. Are there any questions for Pat or no?
Maybe I would just mention one quick thing. So the design is thrown here. This is the area they were wanting it to go into. Talking with Shive, I said, what's the pros and cons of that? Really, the only thing, they said that would be a con when you're moving over here, you have further to go in the parking lot, maybe more concrete than what you have right here. But this is kind of hilly. There's some areas over here that will be cleared, that have to be cleared out. So they kind of say each other cost-wise, probably, might be a little bit more concrete in this area. But overall, you're not a big difference.
Clay, I would just shift some of that concrete that's down on the, down in that area, just shift it up to the other side.
Trap might need to be moved.
Right. We could expand that out to the-
So point to where it's going to be, right there?
Closer to the houses.
Where is this existing sidewalk on the west side of the park?
It's the sidewalk that we put in.
Oh, I see.
It's pretty close there. It comes out of the street, then you get to the playground area.
So will there be the potential of balls being thrown back into the playground then, area? I mean, how tight-
No.
I mean, eventually you have the fence and stuff that'll be there. But having that amount of balls being thrown over there, potentially, yeah, a little bit closer. But you have that really anywhere you're at in the park.
No additional-
Have a backstop, just like giving the field.
No additional concerns with drainage draining like that, I assume?
No.
Good.
That question was asked. There's going to need to be some work done if you're there or there.
Yeah, we have work to do anyway, so this is, should be a kind of a cost neutral deal. Might be a little more concrete, but less dirt work, you said, right, Jack?
Yeah.
Yep. This is Clay Haley. I just wanted to say thank you all again for your dedication to the Miracle Field and Kellum's Kingdom and all the hard work you do.
Thanks, Clay. Appreciate it.
Next, I want to make sure the council aware. When they do this work and they get the field put in, no fence, no stands, none of that other work. But as that starts coming forward, you know, we're really going to need to look at the parking lot, bathrooms, concession stand. If that's still part of the things they want to see down out there. So are you thinking of all the different things coming up in the future?
As a side note, if you can hear me, you know, it's our intent to continue to fundraise. You know, we want to get the servicing in and the ball field in. We've had a lot of grants that are starting to mature. And if we don't use those funds and take traction, there's a chance that we could have to give it back. So a lot of our motivation to get the structure in is to show the progress. And it's our belief as a group that it will help us continue to fundraise in the communities and the surrounding communities, even more importantly, as children come and enjoy the field.
John, this is Clay again. You've mentioned a couple of times servicing. Could you define that for us, please?
I guess, I don't follow you. Servicing the youth, I mean, I guess what I'm saying is having the ability to service these kids that don't have any other place to go. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, I didn't know if it was a physical structure and I wanted to understand it, right? Thank you, John.
Nope. No, for us, it's having the place that they can go. You know, obviously, we're not going to start league right away this year. If we get the service board, it's kind of just to raise awareness so we can continue to fundraise and then put the rest of the structure in places that funding is available.
Fantastic, thank you.
If I, Ally, can you get here if I can enjoy? Sorry. We've had numerous businesses in town, too, that said that they would love to donate. They just want to make sure it's something that is going to happen. And we feel that this would give them that sense of security.
How far away do you expect people to come to drive to play on this field? How many miles away?
The interest, the interest that has already been indicated to us is as far as Des Moines. You know, we've had conversations with folks in Harlan and Atlantic. So it's difficult to say. You know, Miracle Field, you know, kind of the mothership has told us you can anticipate a 60-mile radius of where the field is at.
I have another question. It's Jerry again. Had there been any other? We were given a list of fields there were in the area. Have there been any other new fields begun or started since, what's it been, six months since we talked to you or not? Do you know?
I think we approached the council maybe 12 to 16 months ago. And when we did that, Ames is in the same planning stages as us. So I would say that they're pretty close to launching their field at a similar time as ours. But the next closest would be the Des Moines and Sioux City. My knowledge, there's maybe one in Omaha as well.
They were already done at the time or not? Was, am I right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, Ames is the only one under construction.
Okay, good. Then we'd go to the northwest to Sioux City, is that about right?
Correct. So, you know, our hope is to cover the, maybe the northwest of Carroll, you know, from here to Highway 20 and down to the interstate by Harlan. If you're looking kind of for a range, what we were hopeful for, I mean, it's hard to say how many more we can attract. You know, really, at this point for us, it's more about getting the field in and starting to get the message out that we will have leagues in the upcoming year. So really creating the awareness.
Ankeny has one. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think John worked on that one. Did you work on the one in Ankeny?
Yeah. There was one that they built right across from Principal Park and then have consequently moved it. And that was the one I was involved with.
Okay. Anything else for John or Pat and Ally? All right, thanks. Thanks, people. I appreciate your time. Thanks for the update.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jerry. Moving on, there are no ordinances this evening. The next item is under resolutions, and it's the Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition subdivision final plat. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you this evening is the Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition subdivision final plat. This is a request by Matt Gredeman of 704 Development Corporation. This is, this preliminary plat that was presented to you about a year ago was called Rolling Hills South Condominiums. And it was approved on August 6th of 2018. It consists of 2.6 acres of land located between Highway 71 and the Meadow Lane Road in the One Hills. There is one lot as part of the subdivision, it's a condominium lot. The development calls for 12 units total. Six duplex buildings will be constructed in this project. This will all be anticipated to be fee title ownership, so homeowners will be owning it. There is a single public street called West Ridge Drive. That'll be extended. There'll be a cul-de-sac as part of the development and city-owned utilities, including water, sewers, storm sewer, developed as part of this. The preliminary plat, I would just note, did include a design exception which was approved related to the storm sewer in this area. With that, I guess this did go to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their June 10th, 2020 meeting. And they did recommend approval of this final plat to the city council. So that's, city staff is recommending the city council approve the Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition subdivision and be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
Yeah, is there an anticipation date of starting construction and stuff? They're getting close to, okay.
Beginning construction. The street utilities are all in, so it's ready for construction.
Are there any questions for Mike? If not, I will look for a motion to approve the Rolling Hills South Fourth Edition subdivision, City of Carroll, Carroll County, Iowa, final plat.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The next resolution is the 28E agreement between the Carroll Community School District and the City of Carroll Soccer Fields. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, this is a renewal of the original contract for the use of the soccer field. The school owns the property. We helped build the facility back in the early 90s. We paid 50% and the school paid 50%. And with that, we had the priorities March, April, May, and June. And then they had the charge of it July through the rest of the year. And we maintain it in the spring. We do the fertilizing, we take care of it, the mowing. Do a lot of that work in the spring and summer. And then the school does take over some of those responsibilities in the fall. Really, from the last agreement, I noticed that the agreement had expired. It renewed every year. It would still be in effect if we didn't update it year to year, but have a conversation with the schools. And me thinking the best interest in the city is to get a contract in place again for several years. So we did do that. One change we've made was David Broner asked us to be into a 28E agreement. Last time it was not. I worked with Dave and I thank Dave for helping me with getting that all, all the verbiage and everything we needed correct for it to be a 28E agreement. The school has approved this. And I guess in my memo, I just mentioned the one small change is the goals on the large field are 50/50 cost now. Before, it was just us because we were really the ones using the field. The school didn't use a lot of the soccer field back then. But as their program expanded and got larger, in the last agreement, we gave up Field 11 different nights and different times so they could do their varsity soccer matches out there. And they still have that priority in the spring. They'll use Field 11. We have use of the rest of the field. If we need Field 11, we usually schedule our games on Saturdays because they don't have a lot of games on Saturdays. And my belief now is a lot of times when the, like, for instance, the Carol Kemper soccer game goes on, they're down at the stadium. So they're trying to play more games at the stadium to give those kids in the soccer program the experience on the big field. So those things have changed a little bit over the years. But basically, it's the same agreement. It's a great agreement, great facility out there. A little windy, but it's well-maintained. Both city and the school do a great job and people enjoy it. Always the concern is parking, but we get through it. So I guess I would answer any questions if you guys had anything.
Anybody have any questions for Jack? I think we've been doing this already, so. Does this have to be approved as a 28E agreement?
Yes.
So that would have to probably be part of the motion, the way I think.
But it's part of the resolution. So you approve the resolution.
Resolution and it's a 28E agreement. Just look for a motion to approve the 28E agreement and what the resolution authorizing, Mayor, to execute on behalf of the city, the 28E agreement between the Carroll Community School District and the City of Carroll for the soccer fields.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Fleschner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jack. The next item on the agenda is the annual property and liability insurance removal. And Laura, when you're ready, please.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the time of year that we renew our property and liability insurance. As a reminder, we work with Mid Iowa for this. The renewal is due on July 1, or the coverage starts July 1 as well. So this year, the total cost was just under $258,000, which is about $1,700 more than the previous year. There, attached to the memo is a comparative summary of this upcoming year and the two years prior, so you can see what has gone up and what has gone down. There is a slight increase in the general liability part of roughly $2,400. That largely has to do with the way we're rated. It's based upon our expenses, our budgeted expenses for our upcoming year. And they typically go up each year, and so that there's that increase. There's also an increase of a little over $3,800 for our property insurance. Each year, our property amount goes up. ICAP automatically increases all the property by a minimum of 2%. We can change that if we feel that that's not correct. Plus, this year, we also made sure we got what we feel is the more complete value of the remodeled library, the new city hall building and the PD area, that that is all fully incorporated into this renewal. So that's another reason for the increase in the property side. We did see quite a bit of a decrease in our worker comp premium of just under $5,500. And if you recall, that is largely based upon our wages and a mod factor. Our mod factor did go down slightly from .74 to .73, which is a good thing. And our estimated payroll, I, oh, I'm not sure. That usually typically goes up. They always automatically increase that every year. And then we can make adjustments to that. However, we feel payroll typically goes up every year. The other thing that was interesting with the worker comp was the rates in each of the categories of how they put your wages. You're rated on different categories of what your job duties are. Each one of those categories went down. That information comes from the state. And that went down, I think, in almost all the categories from last year. So that was a nice savings for the city. And one final thing I'd like to mention is, in years past, we've always had liability coverage on the airport through a company called Phoenix Aviation. Now that Mid Iowa has taken, and we'd always purchase that through Ziska Insurance. Well, Mid Iowa now has taken over Ziska Insurance and they are servicing or helping us through all of our insurance renewal stuff. And we were doing some research. Actually, Terry Axman, our agent, started this conversation. It's like trying to figure out why we have this additional coverage. We couldn't come to a good explanation of why. Because we, going back to the company, you know, our best guess is maybe years and years and years ago, I mean, we're talking maybe early 90s, 80s, when we entered into this. Maybe our general liability carrier at that time maybe did not have coverage for airports. They specifically excluded that, so we had to get the additional coverage. I can't say that for certain, but that's our best gut feeling. ICAP now does cover airports. So we feel it's prudent that we don't need to have the Phoenix Aviation coverage anymore. And so we're recommending to drop it, since ICAP will cover us. As in the past, we're asking council to approve this and enter into our agreements as requested or required by ICAP and IMWCA with payments of the premium or checks would be written on July 1st, 2020, which is our first expenditures out of our new fiscal '21 budget. Does council have any questions about our insurance?
So with you two, in the recommendation, so you two are the liaisons. So they can contact either one of you? That's the way I understand it?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is about $13,000 less than what you budgeted for?
Yes, typically, when I do the budget, I will build in an automatic increase of 5%, not knowing exactly what things are going to be doing. And so, yes, we are under budget from what we had originally. Put in the budget for total expenditure. However, the amount that we had asked for taxing was less than what we budgeted. So it's not as much money than will come out of the general fund balance.
Laura, would you have any reason to believe that the work comp audit adjustment would vary dramatically from the $14,000 to $1,700 that's been over the last couple of years?
No. You just never know for sure.
Right. But no reason to think it'd be much different?
No. We've had some years where we've gotten a refund back. I can say though, once, in the career time that I've been here, we were within a dollar.
Nice.
It was a dollar difference. And of course, they didn't bill us or they didn't give us a refund. I cannot remember which way it was, but we said dollars close enough.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions for Laura? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution for the contracts for property liability and workers' compensation insurance coverage. and workers' compensation insurance coverage, which includes pre, payment of premiums on July first, twenty-twenty, and appoint city manager Mike Pogie Weaver and city clerk, finance director Laura Schaefer, as contacts, act as liaisons between the city and ICAP.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. Uh, the next, uh, item under resolutions is the not-to-exceed-seven-million-six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar general obligation local option sales tax bonds. And this is a public hearing. It is five forty-five. We will open a public hearing. And Laura, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the city has been considering making improvements to the Carroll Recreation Center for a number of years. The project includes a new gym with a raised running track, expansion, and updates to the pool, and renovating the locker rooms. We had talked about this project in some length at the last council meeting, and council did take a number of actions to those items as we're looking at the different funding options to fund this project. Tonight is the time for the public hearing on the not-to-exceed-seven, roughly seven-point-six-million general obligation local option sales tax bonds, which is a portion of the funding for the total project. Um, at the last meeting, council com, approved a resolution calling for a special election, uh, election to issue five-point-nine million of general obligation capital loan notes as another portion to fund the project. Also, last meeting, council approved calling a special election to remove the sunset for the local option sales tax to be effective January one of twenty-twenty-four. These special elections are set for September eighth of twenty-twenty. And finally, at the last council meeting, council approved a resolution setting tonight as the date for the public hearing on this seven-point-six-million general obligation, uh, capital, or excuse me, bonds. The notice was published timely on Tuesday, June ninth. At the time of this hearing, council should consider anybody making comments that's, um, available via go-to meeting. We had not received any comments into the city clerk's office prior to the meeting, for or against. No comments were received. And if this is approved, council, or excuse me, city staff will work with Kristen Cooper, Ballers and Cooney, and Suzanne Gerlach with PFM Financial Advisors to issue the date, uh, to issue the debt at a later date. So, at this point, it's council's, um, direction to finish the public hearing and then take action on the resolution.
There was no petition or anything like that that had shown?
No, petition was filed.
And I, since this is a public hearing, if there's anybody in the public that would like to make any comments? We don't have anybody here. I don't know if anybody's on?
There's one caller on that.
Is there one caller? Okay. Is there anybody in the public that would like to make another comment? Any comments from the council? Any questions? Otherwise, it is five forty-seven. Close the public hearing. If there's no other questions, I'll look for a motion to approve the resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not-to-exceed-seven-million-six-hundred-and-ten-thousand-dollar general obligation local option sales tax bonds.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
No.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. And the last item under resolutions is the water distribution main replacement, which was a late add-on, but I think we've got to get through it, uh, for twenty-twenty. And I believe Randy, if you're online, please, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Union Pacific Railroad has submitted a proposed longitudinal pipeline agreement for our water distribution main improvement project. The, this agreement grants the city the right to construct and maintain seven-hundred-and-sixty feet of water main on railroad property. Uh, that water main is proposed to be located along the south side of the railroad property from Crawford Street to Carroll Street. Um, the terms of the agreement are quite detailed, and they are included in the agreement, as well as a license fee of twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend that your consideration of the resolution approving the longitudinal pipeline agreement.
Yeah, I, I, they just got this agreement. If we don't do it tonight, it's another three weeks before we can start that project, and just puts it that much further behind, so. Are there any questions for Randy?
I don't see it here. What are the fees other than the, the initial fee?
I think it was just the twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred that we had to cover for the license, I believe. I, I, Randy, is that?
Yes, that is the license fee in the agreement. Um, the agreement does include a requirement that a company called Rail Pros, um, inspects and does flagging for the project. Rail Pros is an independent contractor. Uh, they, the city will be required to hire them to do that inspection and flagging for that portion of the project. And that, those contracts, we do not have. Uh, we can't get those until this one is approved, uh, but they will come to you as soon as they're received.
Okay, thank you. Who gets it? Who gets his twenty-two-thousand-eight-hundred dollars?
That goes to the Union Pacific Railroad.
Okay.
Well, that's a, that's a fee to use their property, if you will. So, now they got more money to put into their railroad crossings.
Well, I also asked Mike earlier today about all the, the insurance requirements.
Yeah, there was quite a few in there.
And I wondered if that would add to our, uh, ca, our insurance costs. And Mike, you assured me, no, right?
Yeah, it should not add.
I didn't realize of all that there were that many insurance products that could be sold.
They are thorough.
Mm-hmm.
They ever say anything about our crossing for the bicycle path?
As part of this project, no, but I mean, it's something we're working on. Uh, so, the, our plan is we're gonna be about, uh, twenty feet short of what would be the south end. We're gonna pour up to the railroad crossing concrete. Um, the reason we're staying short is this project that we're talking about on the water main, distribution project, would actually disrupt. So, if we poured it, it'd be repoured later. So, we're gonna keep a little bit short so they can do this work. But then we're hopeful that we can get the asphalt comp, so there's no guarantee, but our road overlay project to come in and do the sections between the railroad tracks. And at the very least, it, at least starts to move that project forward, uh, and then we can work to find a different contractor if they're unwilling to do that work for us while they're in town. So, we're, we have a plan to start moving the ball a little bit. And then that last section will get poured when the water main project's done.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, when we do that, Mike, wha, what's it look like? Is there just an abrupt ending to our concrete and?
It will for a period of time, and we have, um, sidewalk closure signs up.
Right.
So, those will stay in place till we finish.
They're getting to be about semi-permanent now. We're ready to have them down any time.
We want to get them down.
I know you do, Mike. Thanks for the work at it.
Are there any other questions for Randy? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the Union Pacific Railroad Company, uh, longitudinal pipeline agreement.
So moved.
Second.
There is a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Cots?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. The, uh, next item on the agenda is reports, and the first item under that is the twenty-nineteen trails improvement, uh, change order number three and a certificate of substantial completion. And Jack, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, tonight, we have two, two items to talk about, uh, for the trail plan, the two thousand-and-nineteen trail plan, which again, was starting at Veterans Park and went along the east side or the west side, the east side of the golf course, west side of Grant Road, past the high school, and then around the soccer fields and the baseball fields. We are substantially complete with, with that work. Um, we do have one, uh, change order. It is the actual deduction, so that is a good thing. It's basically, um, the change order three adds turf reinforcement matting in areas where there were some steep slopes, um, where we wanted to control the erosion more, um, and while the grass was established chain thereafter. And the remaining of the change order was, um, a deduction of type four temporary seed that was not used. It de, and we decreased the need of silt fence when we did that, um, to match, uh, what the contractor actually used on a project. You see this in, in projects, and I know Randy has those when he does concrete work and some of those other things. You don't, you think you know how, what the quantity's gonna be when you go out to bid, but you don't know until the project's done. And in this case, um, we had a deduction of the temporary seed and the silt fencing of twenty-four-thousand-nine-hundred-seventy-seven dollars, and some of that was due to the timing last year. It just wasn't a good time to have that type of seed. We didn't want, uh, our parks and golf superintendents in those areas didn't think it would be beneficial. Um, so that was not done. They came back and restated with the type of seed that we, that was both recommended by both superintendents in those areas, and we were able to use their expertise. It, it has some, gr, grass is established in some areas pretty well. Um, there's some areas that still need a little work. We'll be working on that. Um, we'll use our staff, um, to do it. I think you'll see a better, better end to that with, with our guys doing that. So, there will be some additional seed and a little bit of work, um, that will get done with this project. So, overall, the change order contract decreases the amount by twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and thirteen cents, which if the proposed third, change order three is approved, it'll bring the total project cost to, uh, seven-hundred-sixty-two-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-one cents, where change order two is at seventy-two, seven-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand-seven-sixty-four-fifty-four. So, um, and with that, with the change order, we are at the point where we're at substantial completion. Uh, we have attached the items that were needed to be, um, done in the, uh, substantial completion phase, and those have been met. So, um, I would open up to any questions, um, with that. Overall, the project went pretty timely. Uh, we had a few times when I had asked the contractor to do a few special things, especially around the school area. Um, we, we do have one item that we're working with the schools on, on the sprinkler system. It's kind of been input in the school's hands. We've, our guys went out and did some of the repairs, and we found more, uh, problems. The last time I checked with the school, they were still working, um, on a couple of those minor issues. Uh, the items that have been done, the contractor has paid for them. We have been paid for those items. So, with that, uh, we're at the point where, uh, we're at substantial completion.
Are there any other questions for Jack? I think, since this is pretty much all done, and I know people are using it, so.
That's, that's gonna be my question, Jack. Do you have a counter on how many people use that, like, per day or so?
I don't. We can sure try to, um, I know Region Twelve has some counters, um, that I think that we might be able to use on that. So, I can see, um, if that's a possibility. I know it's busy every time we're out there on the golf course. I know people say they see people walking all the time when they're golfing, so. It, it has a lot of use.
Anybody hit my golf ball yet?
Not that I know of.
I, I see people running out there at six in the morning, you know, over the noon hour. If I'm running home or on the weekends, I mean, and in the evenings, people are on that thing, uh, see a few bikes, so.
I'm amazed how many people park out at the ballfields and just go around.
Round and rounds, mm-hmm. That's a
That's what we do.
Safe area, it's quiet.
Yeah, flat.
Flat, yep.
Flat up there in the northwest corner. That's good, play.
And we are pretty close to having the design of the next phase that will go, um, south into Northeast Park. We're gonna try to get it to Northeast Park. So, that phase is pretty close to being done. When Shide gets that down, we'll bring all that work to you. We'll have a public meeting with the neighbors. This will be behind a lot of those neighbors' yards, um, it won't be on their property, but we'll, we'll have some conversations so the neighbors are aware of exactly what's going on, how we're gonna do that, if we'll do virtual, or we have a meeting at Northeast Park per se, or here at City Hall. But we'll have, we'll give the neighbors there a chance to, to know what's going on.
Do we ask about property acquisition to get through that yet, or?
Still working.
Still working on that, okay. Uh, if there's no other questions for Jack, I will, uh, look for a motion to approve the change order number three to the twenty-nineteen trails improvement in the amount of twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen cents, and then I'll do the certificate of completion as a separate.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. And then I need a, uh, motion to accept the certificate of substantial completion establishing the completion date of October thirtieth, twenty-nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. There's no other discussion. We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. I trust everyone's read the committee reports and the monthly activity reports. I have no comments this evening. Are there any comments from the council?
I, I have one tonight.
Yes, Jerry, go ahead.
And this is coming from a, uh, a constituent, and I was walking very early one morning. I walked past the house of, home of Larry Teal, and who was working on his grass that the city had to repair during a water main project. And he wanted me to say that he could not be more complimentary of the work that the city did. They came back multiple times to, uh, uh, check the grass to make sure that everything was, was looking good, and he was very pleased.
Thank you for that comment. We'll pass it on.
Uh, I'm gonna say this too. Larry's a, a yard guy, and the grass we fixed looks better than his. And his is good. I don't know if Larry will appreciate that, sure.
First you pat it back, and then you...
Yeah, he's, he, he would say it himself. He's very pleased with it. You know, I, I have one note also. It was interesting reading reports to note that, and Mr. Pogie Weaver, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe we have seven-point-film-four-million dollars worth of commercial projects going in the month of May here in Carroll's, about, right?
In the ballpark, yes.
Yeah, seven-point-four-three-nine, yeah, something on that order. Uh, so, it was really nice to see. I know we've got a lot of big commercial projects going on, and it's good to see things progressing and moving forward.
Oh, you know, I'd probably back up and, and, uh, take some time to appreciate what the law enforcement did the other night with all the stuff that was going on and took some action right away. I think that was greatly appreciated. Sure stirred up a lot of people in town, because I, a lot of people sounded like they were driving out there to take a peek, and was really nothing going on, but at least you guys were out there in force, and I think that helped. Thanks, Brad.
You know, and on that too, if you look at the numbers, and I know COVID's made things a little weird, but the numbers of criminal offenses continue a downward trend as I look at the reports, too. You know, it's, it's nice to see things continue to get better. They're already good, but continue to get better. Thank you for your work, Chief.
Anything else? Uh, any comments from the city manager?
I have a few comments this evening, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I distributed on the dais was some information from the National League First of all, I distributed on the dais was some information from the National League of Cities. I hope each of you take some time to look at it. It really talks about why cities matter. And right now, with COVID nineteen and a lot of the issues surrounding it, there's some uh real financial challenges cities are facing. So I hope you take it in opportunity to look at it and would also encourage you to contact your federal representatives because I think this really is a timely important issue for cities of all sizes throughout the country. So I'll take it opportunity to look at that, please, if you have a chance. Um related to COVID nineteen, we really continue uh to kind of open up and do more. Um we're seeing, you know, light usage still, a lot of our facilities and and services, both rec center, library. Uh people are starting to return, but really um very lightly, which is kind of expected through this time as we we move to kind of the next phases of reopening. So uh but we are seeing some life there. Uh we're waiting for the next governor's proclamation. We would expect that probably this week. And that will really determine in particular like the council uh if we can kind of return more back to normal than what we're doing today. Because currently, the proclamation does require gatherings like this still to maintain six feet of social distancing. And that makes it really difficult to get staff all back in here and workers back in here. But as that proclamation comes back, we'll relay that to council. Any questions on any of that this evening? That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh if there's nothing else, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Uh we'll go and vote, please.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
Thank you.